All right.
We need to move on to the August 9th, 2016 committee meeting. President, our board members, Chair Scott Geraci, Sarah Horstley, and myself, Scott Faulkner, also President Ernie Strasser and Rob Odey. Please rise for pledge.
Oh my. Oh my. Oh my. To the United States of America, and to the Republic where which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Faulk, if we were going to go towards hell flight, you could have sang across the field or Buckeye Mountain, right, Carmel, Ohio, beautiful Ohio, hang on a second.
He can, whatever you want to.
That prison jumper's on for that.
All right, discussion items.
All right, don't have a ton of agenda tonight, just letter A in conversion community school. Kevin's back in, work, working like crazy is normal. We have 35 enrolled right now. We're going to push our enrollment up to 42, 44 this year. One, because we really know what we're doing. Second, we got a lot of returning kids, even though we graduated nine. We've grabbed three kids this, just this week. One was a homeschooler and two were coming from former E-Covers. And so, that's good, because that's new revenue coming in, as opposed to someone coming over from high school, which is Rob and Peter to pay Paul. So, really focusing on that. Why, we're feeling comfortable bumping our numbers up a little bit for a couple reasons. One, because we're in our third year. We have the same person returning for the second year. A lot of the kids have been working over the summer. And so, that year actually goes till October 1st, August 1st. So, we had kids make a lot of credit progress in June and July, which was great to see some of these kids. We're working six, seven hours, and remember with our software, we can see their actual active time. Big kids working six, seven hours a day, 3:40 hours a week, and that's, that's really neat. Couple of those kids we will see graduating midway through their senior year. Some of them maybe second month of their senior year. They're sophomores now, but they're matriculating. And it's not easy stuff, if that's what happens when we basically give yourself an extra academic quarter by working in the summer. And then also Debbie's going to be heavily involved there, and so that gives us extra personnel in there, especially with all, not only just the testing, but just a lot of them are one-on-one times. So, we're able to expand a little bit. We're not going to grow to what we can't handle. We're not in it to make money, red, educate our kids, and doing that. The biggest pieces are a lot of returns. That's a big piece of our comfort level, and Kevin returning. So, we're not starting kids over with understanding the program and the rest.
Do we have anybody that we've turned away, or is that our 42 to 44?
Um, we've had some current lower high school kids that, instead of coming over, we're cycling them into the Success Academy with Larry. A big piece of conversion school is us, is Kevin started this last year as an intake conference and gaining an understanding, and a lot of communication about your responsibility to continue to work when you're not here. That if you're just going to leave your laptop here, take your laptop home and not turn it on, you're going to get behind. You're not just going to stay, you're going to fall behind. And we really gauge what their comfort level is, and it's the child and parent, or parents, grandparents, guardians. And so, when we don't have a real good feeling for that comfort level, we immediately steer them into Larry's program, which is nine and 258. So, it's more of a structure, and we don't take the laptop with you.
Right.
So, as in, this summer, we haven't anybody we've turned away, we have had in the past, that we're not the fit. We're not, we're not the joke, we're not easy. Don't come here if you're not going to work hard. And we're not going to bring you in, because if you come here and don't work hard, then you're going to come over and have to sue me, and I'll have to expel you for the lack, attendance or lack of effort. We call it academic insubordination. And so, it's the last thing we want to do. So, we had to do that a bunch the first year, but kind of have a different profile of what we're going. Remember that first year we were starting up, we were just building, make sure we had 25? And now, if we were at 20, say, and we're going to be at 25, we'd have a big one made one. And so, that's not what we're doing, so. Okay, move to the Allison update. I've had two, well, three interested parties go through, and I've got one realtor coming through tomorrow for the third time, another one coming through for the third time on Thursday. These are just come a-walking through. They've done the nuts and bolts. Tell me about your boiler. It doesn't. Tell me about the flat roof. Got 25-year warranty. You know, no intrusion, long as you don't come up there, you know, dig a hole or put a lamp or something on it, or a vent. And so, a lot of it's walking through, looking, taking a lot of pictures. We'll be in the point with one of these folks that it's going to be time for their legal counsel and bill dieters to get together, to start talking up. This one's a very, the one that we're going to be at that point after tomorrow is a real promising one for the city, and for us as somebody who could help bring to the city. So, had trouble connecting with one, so probably they may be in in the next couple of weeks. So, but to move it along, and to say how quick or how slow kind of has its own life right now. It's not a sprint, it's a little bit of a journey, but we'll get there. Every time someone's there, they're taking pictures, notes, asking if I'd step away while they make a phone call. Go down a little bit. And so, things are moving along, is all I can tell you, is people are staying interested. They don't come once, they don't want to come back. So, we'll see. We'll see what happens, so. But, you know, any information they want, I give it to them, because it's public record anyway. Basically, it's our OSFC stuff, and, you know, they're not going to open up as a school. The OSFC stuff's a pretend school, but it does show, you know, what standards are on structure. And so, I give it to them, because that's the right thing to do. So, I'll let you know how these next two go, Wednesday and Thursday. They can both be promising, especially the one. We're all promising. Bond issue update, throw it over to Ernie.
Well, we're waiting on the state to answer our second application, which they have not. And the unfortunate thing is tomorrow is the deadline for Board of Elections. So, if we go with the assumption that they, we don't have approval, then that's more millage. So, that puts us at nine and a half mils approximately, as opposed to if they would approve it, we would be around 8.95 mils. So, we're in a dilemma, and I'm kind of having just an open discussion here, because I literally just read the email myself. Rob can email OD tomorrow, they're not responding too well to our voice messages. Those are the people who need to approve our second application, or not approve it. The path we're on right now is just with the higher millage, and that would be a low bond issue and a high cherry cops issue, okay? It's doable, it's a half mil more. The risk we run if we keep both applications, or we keep both bond issues alive, is that Hamilton County Board of Elections certifies it, and even though we would come back in a week, let's say OD does approve the second application, and we could go with the 8.9, we notify them that we want them to pull it. The state has been known to not get that right, and we could end up with two ballot issues on the ballot. From, from the attorney's email, I think they have enough concern about that possibility that we're just not sure. So, I think we need to email to go tonight with, if we don't hear from tomorrow, I think we can call Brenda, but I would sure hate to see two ballot issues. That's, that's, we would, even if they're, even if they said there's a 20, only a 20% chance of that, I think it's trying, it's not connected to the internet.
Right.
Rather than plug it, I just let it go. I think it's a risk.
Yeah.
But we're going to have to go with nine and a half mils.
What's the difference in, do we know what the, what's a nine and a half and the eight millage?
Eight, 8.95. So, it's about a half mil differential.
Ernie, on the split, the nine and a half, what's bond and what's PI?
Well, it approximately 75% of it's going to be PI.
Okay.
25% of it's going to be bond, I'm rounding there.
Okay. That would be on both, the nine and a half, the eight and a half?
That'd be the nine and a half. It's just the reverse of that if we get the application approved.
That's the eight and a half.
It would be a small, it'd be 75% bond and 25% PI. So, I don't think we have to make a decision until four o'clock tomorrow, but Rob and I are going to have to make it. And, you know, if they tell me that, tell us that there's too many horror stories of both ending up on the ballot, even though you try to pull one, man, it's bad news. That's, I mean, we don't have, we don't, we not only don't have, at that point in time, we have no options, because the voters are going to go in, they're going to be looking at something and going, what do I do here? So, no, I'm.
And, you know, some time to listen, my on the campaign, is August 19th, at 8:30 is when I kicked momentum off, because that's when I got my entire staff in front of me.
Yeah. Well, and I think the department will answer this week.
Yeah.
But tomorrow's the Board of Elections deadline.
Because I've got to, in my, who's running the campaign, momentum off the other front of the starting line, come out of the locker, it's important.
Yeah, absolutely.
My momentum, momentum will start at 8:30, when I, bold points about, here's what we're doing, here's what the millage is, and we've got 58% of our staff, everybody who cares, they have family and friends, and, you know, you talk to everybody, well, here's, here's what the plan is, okay, that's great, here's what the millage is, got to be able to see what it is and what it costs us for a hundred thousand, because that's the end of the conversation, so.
So, if we don't get a verbal okay from Kim that she's going to recommend us, we won't be able to get a final. If she gives us a verbal okay that they're going to recommend, we would tell the attorneys, we'd be a little bit chancy, but we'd tell the attorneys, pull the one you've sent in, put this one in, assume that it's going to get approved. It's a risk, but, but if we don't have a verbal okay from her, I say go with the...
Yeah.
Okay? And that's what's in now. I'm having them prepare the other one, so at four o'clock tomorrow, we can still do it, the nine and a half is what's in. So, we didn't create this, guys. I mean, you, you can't, you know, when Rob and I first sat down a year ago, I said, boy, having this much in somebody else's control. And unfortunately, I mean, you know, they send an email like, well, I've been on vacation, as though it doesn't matter. Tomorrow's the deadline. We don't get to do that to people, but, you know, they do, so. And of course, if you, you know, I don't care if it's recorded at this point, this is a judgment application. It is not straightforward yes or no. This is one where they evaluate what we send, and they, they can make an assessment, well, if you rock the boat too much, what's going to happen?
Right.
Well, you wanted your answer, it's no.
And that's why I let it go today.
So.
Because I've been calling so much, I don't want to get it in technistic.
Yeah, but I think if we can, if you send that tonight and just say, you know, tomorrow's our deadline with Board of Elections, we need some guidance here.
Ernie, is there a floater out there of a possibility of sitting to wait to see if we find out if we can get the lower millage and go in, go in May?
I mean, if that's an option you want to pursue, yeah, but I don't know if there's a special available to us in May.
I don't know. I haven't called for it.
You know, I mean, I would almost look at that being that we, we fight hard to get to nine and a half, and then if we have to, we come back in May with, with the other one if we get it approved, which there's no guarantee it'll be approved in May either.
No. And I don't even know if there's an election coming up for presidential election.
Yeah.
I don't know. It was just something I almost been thinking about.
Yeah. Well.
You can put the game off for a month after.
Well, and the game may not be any better. And we could have higher interest rates, you know, and the half mil gets wiped out. So, there's too many variables outside of our control.
Yeah, there's a lot of variables.
We're, we're Norwood, and, and we're making the best decisions we can, but we're, we're dependent upon people who don't have the same sense of urgency about things. So, sorry.
Keep everybody up to speed. We're done here, if you wanted to go right to office with me, help me put that together.
Okay.
Do five minutes.
Yeah.
Come and jump to letter E real quick. New hires, we have 20 this year. That includes administrators, teachers, and we have our new teacher in service Thursday. And so, it's all day. We've kind of changed a little bit, because it's been more central office driven, a lot of Christina, Shannon, Treasurer's Office, and one thing that we heard, you know, then we sit down, we actually do a survey with our new employees and with our principals. One thing we really cut some good feedback on is our principals would like to have some time. So, what we will do is we start out, we used to use this, but it's not big enough, so we're starting out, we're in many lights there, about an hour of the opening, and everybody will actually break off into the buildings with their principal, and then they'll reconvene for lunch over at high school, and then go back to the May for more stuff like the Treasurer's Office, filling out your insurance and tax papers, and then some, that points, testing information, curriculum information, IEP touch stuff, but we wanted to give them more time, and that's what we heard from, from our new teachers the last two years, and from our principals, we want more time with them in our building, on building specific things. We change a little bit, and it'll be good, be good things. It's the biggest group we've had. So, as you know, we made up some movement, made sure that we have the best adults for our kids, and so, that's some of the numbers as well, we had some people leave. So, let you guys know how it goes. Okay, next, from Great Oaks Board Representative, I'm going to turn this over to Sarah here in a second, but as you know, every school district has a representative, every school board, school board, or school district has a representative at Great Oaks. And in the past, it always had to be a school board member. Law changed to make that a little bit broader, to try to, I think a lot of the attempt was to try to give people some experience in the, in the fields of the areas of expertise and instruction that are at the JBSs, which I think really got it down, because they're teaching real-world application, as well as they don't have air tests, OGT tests, and all that stuff. So, last week, our last board meeting, Sarah asked me to stick her out for a couple minutes when we chatted, and I'll turn it over to Sarah at this point.
Yeah. So, as we were all just talking about right before getting started, life is crazy. And I've been on the board for seven years, and I've really enjoyed my time on the board with Great Oaks, it's a great organization, and they do amazing things. But with so many life changes that we've had lately, I've had to reevaluate a lot of things that I'm personally involved in, and a lot of those decisions have been very hard on me. But I need to continue to focus where my time, I feel, is most rewarding and most valuable. And right now, that's my company job that pays the bills and feeds my family and keeps us in a house. It's my family, which at this point, I hardly get to spend much time with them as it is. And then it's the Norwood City School Board. And so, I've narrowed it down to those three things that I want to continue to be a part of, and do the best I can with the time I have in those areas. So, I've resigned from the Amis for Success School Board, and then I'm looking to resign from the Great Oaks School Board as well. So, you know, as Rob said, it doesn't have to be someone who is on the school board, it can be someone who is either a Norwood City resident, or somebody who even works in the city of Norwood. They don't even have to be a resident. And they truly are looking for someone who has, like Rob mentioned, the business acumen of any of their many categories that they service. So, I mentioned like food service, hotel, oh, I forget what they call it, like the hospitality areas, and you have firemen, policemen, they have all different kinds of services that they offer and hook to support. And so, we could find somebody here in the city, either through the many companies that we have here, or even within our residents, to fill that poor position. And so, I know I've been thinking of who we could have fill it, I just needed to talk to you guys about it before we actually reached out to anybody on it. That's a brilliant idea. I know, I, when we talked, I said, you know, our, our other board members, I know, it's one night a month, and it isn't, it's not a huge commitment, it's several hours to Wednesday night, and then there's emails, you know, and so it isn't, as I was saying to Rob, like it doesn't give me back days in a month, but it, it's mentally challenging to, to get distracted as I see the emails come through weekly. And then, you know, it is the one night a week, so it's getting away from my family and one more night.
Yeah. And like Sarah and I were talking, the first thing we're just going through, just chatting about, okay, what for board members, well, it's Wednesday night. So, Scott has a conflict, that's Tim's day off of work, so he's getting a lot of things done. You travel all over the place. Kenny, he's at work till eight, nine o'clock tonight, and, you know, he has to also get here at 5:30 or 6:00. So, I'm like, oh, boy, this Sarah reminded me, but it doesn't have to be school board members anymore. And we thought, oh. And so, what I thought is we bring it to the committee, and then, you know, I think maybe bring back to the next committee, kind of the process, I think we used very well, some names of residents, people who work in businesses here, I thought maybe Sarah is, there's like a list of every field that they have there.
Absolutely.
If we just email that out to everybody, that way you kind of prime us about things that they have, because I know a lot of what they have, and I'm sure I'm missing a ton in my mind.
Yeah.
And we have somebody who Kenny had lunch with yesterday, he's not a Norwood resident, but is opening up that hotel, Paul Deed, who wants to get involved with us, again, with the Chamber, that's Judge Nadine Allen. And that's a name that's out there, that's pretty powerful. But I think one thing that's important to him is we have somebody who we know, and any decisions that they're going to be making is going to make sure they have the best interest in Norwood City Schools and our students who are out there. Because then they graduate with us, and everything they do represents Norwood. Because, you know, you could go out there and after two months, they want to come back.
Right.
And Harry's a really, really good man, a superintendent there, so I always want to make sure that, you know, what we provide for him and his boys, so Paul, just like you guys.
Right. And that's, that's the comfort level for me, is that it is such a well-organized group, and the board works so well together, and of course, Harry, the leader, is amazing, and he is surrounded himself by amazing people. So, I don't doubt that this would be more of a rewarding relationship for somebody who has a vested interest in growing those career fields. And that's what a lot of the board members that I'm with, you know, they, they say, oh, we're going to Nashville this weekend for the ACTE, dah dah dah, and we're going to Vegas, dah dah dah, and it's all paid for by the Oaks. So, they're, they're all interested in growing this field and finding out what are the latest technological advances, so that they can then offer those as part of the Great Oaks. And they, they network with other school boards within the technology education field. So, it's, it's going to be rewarding to this person in that way, but then, I mean, at a minimum, you do get $175 a month, plus your mileage, so it does even.
And they feed you dinner, too.
They feed you dinner, they take care of you, they, every month, it seems like they have a little gift of some sort at Great Oaks, junk drive or a mug.
That's all they purchase from me right there.
So, it is, I mean, it's, it's a very welcoming, nice group, and I don't doubt that somebody would really enjoy it.
I reached out to Harry this week, because we, I know some other districts, but obviously, I know we've had some frustrations with the way we educate and take care of our students IEP, and then when they're out there, I don't think it's as, I will say, it's not done as well as Norwood does it. So, some of our kids who have been struggling, we beat our heads against the wall with that, going back to Joe's first year. So, hired new special ed director, Heath Rowe, who I know from Princeton, is a wonderful man, wonderful educator, and he sent an email to all the headwinds county schools and says, we know we haven't been doing a good job. We're going to get better. Here's a list of everything we have heard. And I'm looking, I'm going, that's about 90% of Norwood's list right there, going back about five years ago, but to come out and say, we know we did wrong, we're adding this many aides, adding this much staff, we want to have as strong of programs as you have. And that's very professional, to have listened and then to say, hey, we were wrong. That, that's showing a lot of humility. And end of the day, it's saying, we want, we're not doing a good job for, for your kids and our kids, so we need to get better with listening to what you have to say. I called Harry and I said, that's, this is my 29th year, and that's one of the best things I've ever read, is we listened, we messed up, and we're taking your suggestions, and we're going to fix it, and we're going to meet with you guys once a month, and we want to know how we're doing. And that's all we're all supposed to do in all of our jobs. And knowing Ed and knowing Harry, it's going to get done. And that, that was great to hear, because we do have a lot of our students IEPs that attend there, especially they, the Further enrollment go there for the Project X, that's a tremendous program. And some of those kids go out there and don't succeed, because they don't have the same support they had here, and now gives them a better comfort level. So, that was one of the best things I've seen in my entire career.
Absolutely. One of the most eye-opening things that I've seen, and I know, you know, I went on the tour when I was in 10th grade, and I thought, well, that's for people that don't want to go to college. And it is absolutely not true. I mean, they set these kids up to be far advanced once they get to college. And so, that, to me, has been so eye-opening, being involved with them, and everything they do is for the children. And it's, it's a wonderful, wonderful program.
You know, I saw that with Mo and Son about their tech, somebody who just wasn't thrilled about education, kind of went because he had to. And to go there and spend half your day in what's your interest, and then in your content area, classes, they tie that English map, associate language arts, into what your content area, what your specialty is. And I've seen kids, I was in a since a principal in career tech for one year, and I saw them, but when I saw it as a father, and so, they're structured different.
Yeah.
We can do that, and structured different.
Yeah. Last month, the meeting's actually tomorrow, which I will be there, but last month, they shared with us an update of the number, the percent of kids that went off and got jobs in their field of work, that went on to college, or you went to the military or whatnot, and they told us about this one boy who went to classes for welding, and he just got an apprenticeship at $45,000 a year, and he's 18 years old, starting out at $45,000 a year. And they said, you know, he's, he's set, because that is a field that people aren't going into, and we need welders.
You got a lot of people who are stick and tag, weld certified, but they don't do a great job of reading the prints and the schematics of what they're going to weld, so they're having to really target a really narrow, thin field. Want to make some money, underwater, underwater welding is one of the, $150 an hour.
Wow.
Yeah.
Wow.
Yep, I was reading an article that Bubba Tech put out, and it's working on power plants, bridges, dams, and shipping industry. I can understand how you weld something in water.
Right.
That puts fire out, doesn't it? I don't understand, but.
I'm pretty sure that that 150 requires that you're actually effective at it. I'm sitting there thinking, I can't even weld in, in normal, dry circumstances, what I'm trying to do.
I can solder that little piece on there.
It's just not enough bread in the world. That's what you used to say.
That's true. Have you been around?
Really grew them off.
Did you grow up with my dad?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, give me a piece of bread. So, Sarah, if you want to send something out of the field, or even a link, and then I can bring Kenny and Tim up to speed on what's going on, if that's okay?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. All right, I can go ahead and move on to the agenda. Education report, as of today, we have new student trips. I don't know if we will by next Thursday, but once we get school in session, I will start to get moving. Employment, you'll see number one, Michelle Whitley with absence, what we've been doing for a lot of people who moved to the ESC, but it may not be a real long term, maybe a year or two. And also, I don't want to say if they're hesitant, but they're, they've been with us for a long time, because we'll do a leave of absence. That way, they keep their seniority number with us, and if they decide, I don't like this, or come back into a position in our district, they still keep their seniority number. Michelle Whitley's been with us a long time, and so, it's a leave of absence, that she is the new enrollment person coordinator, doing a wonderful job already. Going over number two, kindergarten camp, we got four individuals, changed status, this is just changing some hours of Elizabeth, that's one. Classified substitutes, 16, 17 school, you're right, now it's 14. Resolution to hire certified coaches, advisors, 16, 17, going with supplemental contracts, we have 10. Anybody who's doing anything with our kids after the school day, while they may not be on the agenda yet, they have all taken all their classes. And so, Mitch has been very particular of all that. And so, everybody has taken the classes. Every day I'm getting, I get an email saying, I got to go on and approve license, certification, whatever it is, through ODIAC, go on and hit it, and within about 25 hours, they have the license. So, we're getting half dozen a day come down. This is as of Friday, I think I did five yesterday. So, that's good, because then it's just the final piece of the puzzle. If you haven't done that, whether you're a coach or volunteer, you haven't taken the courses, you're not on the field. So, goes over to the next page with marching band, orchestra, whatnot. So, that is our personnel. Don't anticipate we're losing anybody, and I wouldn't let them out of their contract right now if they were trying. We do have a long-term sub, brought back a former teacher to work in a substitute capacity. We have a preschool teacher who was out in Princeton November 15th. And it's preschool, each one of our preschool units has IEP students in it. So therefore, you just can't be pre K3 certified, you have to be pre K3, plus you have to have interventional special start pre K3. So you guys remember Jim Truesdale? Time to middle school, but he used to be an elementary teacher, so Trues until long term sub until 15. He was died trying to get on as an aide, misses being around the kids. And I didn't have any aide openings and I'm actually on vacation going, I gotta find somebody. And then I was driving home because we had to drive home and back because we lost the cat. And on the way home, we found it. On the way home, I just said, Jim Truesdale. There he goes, what are you talking about? I said, my preschool son, I got his number on my phone, I called him, he goes, I'd love to do it, I want to meet with him. So he came in two days later. It is really neat, ever since that day, he's been, he used to see the room. Got a big old gym, big teddy bear down there, making all the stuff, putting it all together. This is a guy of a new life, he's more of an Kroger since he retired. He goes, it's nice not to be at the cash register, just keeping himself busy working at Kroger. And came in today really proud because his son just got Anthony Munoz full scholarship. His son was a golf friend, loved one, graduated 425. And Anthony actually called his house over the weekend and said, you have full scholarship, full tuition for four years of UC. And so Jim was just a.
What building will he be in?
What's that?
What building will he be in?
He's here.
Here, okay. I was going to say, tell him to break that Star Search. Norwood View, he was always the MC at Norwood View Star Search. And we had that from kindergarten up through sixth grade. It even happened after I left there, it was amazing.
Do you know what he started out in before he was in education? He was a cop.
Really, really?
He just doesn't have a personality or a pal.
And then after his second arrest, he got in a scrap with a guy and he said, I don't want to be a cop. So he became a teacher.
Yeah, when I was, I had him for sixth grade and I, my mom, I left something at home and my mom brought it up and he was like, Sarah, your sister's here and my mom. And I was, oh, man. I'll never forget that.
We have a whole bunch, I didn't count them. Scott, I know you've read all these and you'll read them verbatim for everybody at the meeting on TV next week.
No.
Again, it's a bunch of cross outs for one and two words and things of that nature, so it's not a bunch, but it keeps us up to speed. Buildings and grounds, this is resolution declaring the transportation of students that follow the schools are practical for the 16, 17 school year. The dollar amount is set on what that in lieu of is near the end of April every year. So last April, it went from minimum of 250 to a maximum of 125. So it's typically 250, but that's a whole bunch of schools. Remember, it's if you can reach that school during normal drought of time within 30 minutes. And since we don't have buses, we're in lieu of. And then approval facilities, we just got an order rack and they're just standard everything we do for them during the year. And then we have the committee by entry reports.
Yeah, just real quick, that's not on there. How many of you, are each of you maybe familiar with the Hamilton County Development over on Mentor Avenue? They really do a great job. I spent some time there today and I was really impressed with the fact that they aren't a government agency handout. They're they're small, they're backed by Small Business Administration and they're doing some really good stuff. Well, as you can imagine, the reason they're reaching out to us, they they are a not for profit corporation. They want to make some improvements to their facilities there. If you've driven by them, we need those facilities because they would be shambles if they weren't in them. So I told them that I would ask that at least of kind of a yes or no to go ahead and engage in conversation with them about what that might involve. And they're obviously concerned, they pay taxes and they've been paying taxes. And so they're looking at not reducing the tax bill they have, but can they get some relief going forward? And I think it's a good investment for you, I really do. And you know, at the same time, you know, we're faced with the one that's multi millions dollars down the street that I have been very candid that I don't have a lot of support for, people who are going to flip property and leave and you know, whether it makes it or not, these folks are in here for the long haul. And so unless there's opposition, I'd like to, you know, at least have conversation with them following the parameters that we've had before. I think they're a really good citizen, honestly, for Norwood. So, okay, all right, well, I will be in touch with them. I don't expect anything like overnight, but we'll see if we can strike something that works with everything we're we're trying to do consistently with people. And my answer to anybody from the one down the street is that this is a long term citizen that has already made substantial investment and is building your future as opposed to flipping property.
I've been here since the Ford Johnson.
Yeah.
I worked with them way back when.
Your source.
That surprised me too.
When did they, oh, when did they start?
It's in the 90s.
Yeah, I was going to say, it was before I left Star Bank, so.
They've made $400 million worth of Small Business Administration loans, which is equivalent of a billion because they're like the 40% minority share. And they've had only, these are some of the questions I asked because I I got to tell you, I understood they were there for economic development, but I was also expecting to hear the usual grant handout kind of thing, not sustainability, and it's not what you hear there. They've only had, and this is through the era of the recession, about a 3% loss rate, which for that type of operation is not bad, I don't think. And you know, they work hard on foreclosures and those kind of things when those bad things do happen, so. I guess it's just, I really was energized by it, which you know, I don't come in and say, hey, Rob. And I also, you know, I have some material to give Rob because I think that they could be a good partner to high school to help down there as well. Anyway, that was a, that's a good news, kind of good news kind of thing.
Anything else? I will be adjourned at 6:44.